Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting, April 27, 2016. Could I have roll call, please, Laura?
Eleven present, one presiding, zero absent.
Thank you. And now would you join me and Commissioner Henderson in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community at Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heaven.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Report of the Chair, just a couple of things. Commissioner Henderson has formally resigned from the Parks and Recs Board, and so it's open to anybody who would like to have a Commissioner on that board. I know Commissioner Walker expressed an interest, so actually whoever might like to do that should contact Chief Executive Vincent, and we'll make that decision, but we should probably do that as soon as we can to fill that position. Also, several of us went to Wise River a few weeks ago. We had a proposed fire district for Wise River, including Beaverhead, Deer Lodge, and Butte Silver Bow. And now we are in a position, we did a resolution, it has now been passed, we're in a position now to appoint trustees. So I have asked Commissioner Morgan, who has property out there, and Dave Palmer, Commissioner Palmer, whose district it is, and myself, and anybody else that would like to join us, but we have some applications, we thought we'd go through them, and they asked us to please give our recommendations. So we'll be doing that at 5:00 tomorrow evening downstairs in the first floor conference room. So get that taken care of. And I want to thank everyone else that came along to do that. And that's it for my report of the chair. We have kind of a full plate tonight, so at this time, under bid openings, public hearings, and presentations, Section 1, Presentation Communication Number 16-129, and this was rescheduled from April 13. Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on the Butte Economic Gardening Project at this meeting. So Karen, the floor is yours.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Shaw and members of the council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development. And so I promise not to rehash everything that you already know and have learned about economic gardening. I'll just go through it quickly a little bit here for the education of our audience if they aren't unfamiliar with what we're talking about when we talk about this project. This project started for Butte Silver Bow, let's see if I can get it to you. This project started for Butte Silver Bow in March of 2013, and we engaged in an economic gardening pilot project with the National Center for Economic Gardening located in Michigan. I did travel to Michigan, to their center, and was certified in economic gardening, took part in a very intensive course, was very interesting, and brought that program back to Butte Silver Bow. Since that time, we have completed a second round, beginning in the fall of 2014. We had seventeen companies show interest in this program. And so this program really targets second-stage companies within your community, and these companies are firms that have been in existence for a few years, they're seeing some success, they have employees between, you know, nine and ninety-nine employees, they have some gross revenues, and they're seeing, like I said, seeing some success, but maybe there's just something that could take them to the next level, that they're unable to get the right information or get the right research done with their limited staff, limited budgets, and limited time. So this program offers expertise in those areas that might be most useful to these companies. So the companies receive targeted and strategic information tailored to their needs in the areas of market research, GIS, social media, and search engine optimization. These are each performed by a team of professionals from across the country that come together to provide this very personalized attention to these companies. So during the process of us putting together this project, we had nine companies complete the program out of the seventeen that showed interest. And I thought that was, you know, pretty good for a community of our size to have them focused on it. The ones that have an asterisk, those competed, completed a second round of participation, so they went through the project twice. The Port of Montana pointed that out. We provided this service to these companies as part of our economic development tools at Butte Silver Bow, so no cost was borne by these companies. The Port of Montana did pay for their own entry into this project both times, so I just wanted to point that out. But I think that it was very useful, a good program. We completed economic impact analysis for each company as they entered the program and exited the program. We did very in-depth surveys of each company's experiences with the program. Every single company that did complete this project provided positive feedback. They all felt that it had some value and provided some great information and guidance to them as they managed their companies. The Port of Montana has implemented two of the strategies identified through the project in both GIS, which is Geographical Information Systems, which allowed them to target certain industries and areas with what were very, could very much benefit both parties, both the port and the companies that they were targeting in terms of additional business for the Port of Montana. They've also started to implement search engine optimization with their website, so they can understand who is visiting their website, what sort of information they're taking away, what sort of information that they are looking for. And so they did have a very positive, a positive outcome with that. So the question that we were asking, and I was trying to gather quantitative sort of information to give to this body about this project, and it was very hard for folks to quantify for me. So the survey results I did receive back, I did hear back from three or four of the companies, but not in the terms that I was able to graph out for you, something, you know, make a pie chart, something like that. It was all very much, very qualitative type of analysis. And so I'm recommending, as we move this forward, I think economic gardening is remaining and is a very strong tool for our economic development in Butte Silver Bow. It's something that we shouldn't stop, it's something that we should continue to do, and with me having the certification in this project and in this program, I believe that we can continue our relationship with the National Center, but not do it in a blanket way. I believe that we shouldn't necessarily enter into another contract with the National Center at this point and do an active recruitment of firms into the program, but rather continue our cooperation with all of our economic development partners, Headwaters, the BLDC, and our very important partners here in Butte Silver Bow. When we work with companies and identify companies we know that we could target to put into this program that they might benefit from it, we can do it on a case-by-case basis. We also received a lot of feedback in our surveys from the companies that were involved in this, that they really felt like we needed to focus a lot on our startups, which I think is very important, and we are focusing on our startups. You know, we're doing a lot of activities with our Innovation Center, our Innovation and Manufacturing Center, and things like that, and working with entrepreneurs coming right out of Montana Tech and other industries or other colleges in the area. So I believe we are working on that, but I would like to keep economic gardening in our toolbox as something that we can use when we feel like it would be a really good fit for that company. And so I think that that's something that I'm going to recommend at this, you know, we don't have to take action necessarily, but it's something that I'd like you to know, that that's what I believe the direction we should go with this project and program, and so we'll continue to use it. We use the information and the attributes of this program daily since we've been trained on it, and I think it's been extremely useful. So that's my report tonight. I told you it would be brief. I know that I could make it much longer, but we don't need to do that because you all have been educated about this and you've all learned a lot about the program to date. So I'd be happy to answer questions if you had any.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Does any commissioners have a question for Karen? Commissioner Perdido?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, could you tell us how much this entire program costs the community and how many jobs it created over the span of the time it gardened?
Karen?
Chairman Shaw, members of council, Commissioner Dolan. The total cost of the project, we entered into two $20,000 contracts. We did not expend all of the funds on the second contract, so the total amount of funds expended are in the neighborhood, and don't quote me, I'm going to estimate here, is probably about, let's see, $35,000 over since 2013.
Any other questions?
I do not have a number of jobs to share with you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions for Karen? Economic? Thank you, Karen. It's a great update. I can't believe it's been since 2013 already.
I can't either.
So keep up the good work, and if you are, excuse me, but I do have a question. Are there, is there another plan for another segment of this in the near future where we can take on more applicants?
Excuse me, Chairman Shaw, members of council. I believe that we will have more applicants in the future. What I'm recommending now is that we target and identify those individually and not bring a blanket contract before this body to sign with the National Center. We would target those companies individually and bring them into the program, and then we could decide how to, you know, share those costs or work with them individually with our other partners in economic development.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and you have a question. We'll go on to the second presentation tonight is Communication 16-169. Pamela Haxby-Cody, Executive Director, Butte Local Development Corp., requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on the West Park Street Corridor Plan this evening. Pam?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Pam Haxby-Cody, and I'm the Executive Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation, and it's an honor and a privilege to be up here tonight, standing before you, and introducing a friend of ours. He's really come to love Butte. In fact, we're trying to coerce him to move to Butte. We might get him a little closer to where he's from, which is, he's got family in Missoula. John Levy is originally from Idaho. He is the Program Director for the Northern Rockies of Community Builders, and he's done an awful lot of work in our community. He's fallen in love with it, and he's got some great things to tell you tonight about the good work that we all did, many of you here did, along with a few hundred people a few months ago on what Park Street, West Park Street, could look like. Thank you, John.
John?
Well, thank you, members of council, for having me. Thank you for the introduction. I think you were going to tell them I enjoyed long walks in the mountains as well, but it's okay. I'm John Levy. I direct the Northern Rockies efforts, as Pam mentioned, out of our office in Bozeman for Community Builders, where a small nonprofit organization. One of the things we do of many at Community Builders is run an initiative called New Mobility West. And what New Mobility West is focused on is sort of reframing the questions that, for so long, communities have asked, how do we build transportation through our community? We tend to view that question more as how do we build community through transportation? And so we work with communities in a four-state region, Colorado, Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming, to provide trainings and direct assistance to help them with particular issues that they're facing in three core areas. Corridor studies, which is what we looked at here in West Park Street, issues that arise when main streets also serve as state highways, there are sort of competing functions, one of the fast sort of movement of vehicles, the other sort of, this is your, the living room of your community where people are lingering and whatnot. And then finally, strategic capital improvements planning, helping communities sort of prioritize certain portions of their budget for transportation improvements. I forgot I was going to mention, before I dove into this, that if you all have our report in front of you, which I think was circulated earlier, if you happen to have it printed out, I'd actually ask a favor of you all to take a pen and scratch out the word "plan." This is an error on my part. This is actually not a plan, as you know, in your capacity as commissioners, plans have the weight of policy behind them. This is simply a study offering you recommendations that you can choose to do what you wish with. It is not, in fact, a plan. So I apologize for the confusion there. So let me move on. Talking a little bit about the project, I mentioned we offer assistance to communities through New Mobility West. We select communities through a competitive process, so we will ask them to put together a team, identify and scope a project, and come up with very clear objectives that the project would like us to address. So Butte was one of nineteen communities in the summer of 2015 to apply to our program, but only one of four that was ultimately selected. The application asked us to look at the West Park Street Corridor from tech to uptown, basically from the Pita Pit there on West Park to the Arch. That was sort of the area we were looking at. And to work directly with residents and business owners and property owners in the area to help sort of develop a vision for the corridor. Now, this is a crucial point here. The project through New Mobility West looked at the properties and the land uses straddling the street. We didn't look at the street itself. We heard a lot about the street, and I might hear more about that tonight, but our report is ultimately silent in terms of design concepts and ideas for the street. I understand that there's a separate project moving forward through this community that's sort of looking at the street, and I commend you for doing that. It's very rare that a community has the chance to look at both sort of transportation planning at the same time it looks at land use planning. It's very smart to do them both in concert. So I think it's a happy circumstance we find ourselves in to be able to evaluate both of those things together, although our project was, again, looking at the stuff sort of on the sides of the street. So we don't have all the expertise we need at Community Builders to take on these projects, so oftentimes we'll work with consultants. We worked with a consultant called Puma to help us understand some of the market and economic sort of issues that are happening in the area. We believe that any recommendations we put forth have to be sort of market-oriented, and so Puma can help us understand the market dynamics and the economic side of our projects. So we'll bring in some of that information here in just a minute. In fact, we'll do it right now. So we started by creating what we call a primary market area. This is that orange sort of amoeba-like shape represents the area that is most likely to frequent and use the West Park Street Corridor from a business, commerce, and social perspective. Within this area, there are about 9,000 people, there are 4,900 housing units, just over two people per household, median household income of about $27,000 a year. Of the 639 businesses currently in the area, you employ just about 6,700 people. There is, there's plenty more to this if we want to get more detailed. I've got some slides that I've hidden, but I think the most pertinent piece of information from this economics, part of our report, was understanding net retail leakage. Net retail leakage is basically just a way of saying, there's demand in the area that's not being met in the area. People are going somewhere else to meet their need for whatever it is. This is important. We want to bring this up again when we're talking about our recommendations, because people talk about different types of retail and uses, and commercial and office types of uses they'd like to see in the corridor, and it's important for us to understand what those uses are and whether or not they're market feasible. It's not valuable for us to provide you recommendations that probably wouldn't pencil out from a market perspective. So a quick overview of our shareholder engagement process here. The first thing we did was to create a project team, which was comprised of a number of different members of organizations throughout the community, Chamber of Commerce, BLDC, BSB staff. And the purpose of this group was to help scope the project, help logistic-wise, help me make some connections we needed to make to talk with folks around the community and just really steer the project forward. We created an online survey that asks a number of pointed questions about the corridor. I'm hoping maybe some of you saw that or maybe even took it. There were over 350 responses to this survey. Normally, I wouldn't bring this up, but we have never had more response to one of our surveys in all of the New Mobility West communities we've worked in. So pat yourselves on the back, very good engagement when it comes to that. It was awesome to see. That resulted in dozens and dozens of responses and thousands of individual written comments, which are included as appendices of the report if you're in for some late-night reading. We also conducted sixteen focus groups interviews. This ran the range of interests from development, real estate, business, and property owners, government officials, interests in the area, to just understand what people's perceptions are of the corridor, what they'd like to see, what they'd like to see changed, not changed, things like that. And then ultimately, we held a three-day onsite visit, which culminated in a community forum where we presented some of our preliminary results. So we did a lot of things, and here's, you know, a sampling of what we heard. By and large, I'd say more than anything else, people really value the historic character of the corridor. There are a number of beautiful historic properties in the area, and people really identify that authenticity as being central to the character of the area and very much wanting to keep that character as things happen in the corridor. At the same time, people recognize that there were buildings in disrepair, some of which were of a historical nature, some of which weren't. And people would say, well, jeez, it's nice that we've got this character, but is there anything we can do to sort of spruce it up a bit? People really enjoy the mix of uses in the corridor. You've got a really wide range of uses. You've got residential, you've got multifamily residential, you've got commercial, retail, eateries, little cafes, some office stores. They value the mix of uses that are present already in the corridor. This relates to the second bullet point, but beautify, people are saying that there are ways we can sort of spruce up the aesthetic of the area, that would be valuable. What can we do to make this more of a pedestrian-friendly area? People are looking for that as a place to sort of linger. I mentioned that one of the bookings of the project was tech. There's an interest in wanting to connect tech better to uptown, and if there are some ways to do that through the corridor, people are looking for ways to do that. The development community in particular is looking for development predictability. I'll talk about this a bit more in our recommendations, but that came through loud and clear. Street design, of course, I mentioned that, we heard a lot about that, people would tell us about the street and what it ought to look like or not ought to look like, and there are a wide range of opinions there, as I'm sure you know. And finally, parking, people value parking, the convenience of being able to park in front of their destination. So from this, we were able to synthesize this information in what we feel is a fairly sort of comprehensive vision for West Park Street, from what people are telling us. What do they really want this place to be and look like down the road? They value mixed uses in the area, they want to continue that mixed use. It's a place that's aesthetically pleasing, it's beautiful, it's clean, it's safe, it's pedestrian-friendly, it accommodates other modes of transportation, it's not strictly just for sort of fast-moving vehicles, but accommodates bikes and walkers and trolley, which apparently there's a trolley that you all have. They said, oh, we should get the trolley out. Of course, the historic character, they want to see that continued in any way really that you can. They value the existing businesses there, so keep them up and running, and then they're looking for some additional commercial uses that are serving the neighborhood corridor. So I think, you know, sum this up, I think people are looking for West Park Street to be less a place that you just drive through and more a place that you want to be, is how I'd sort of summarize that. So in developing our recommendations, we were looking towards that synthesis vision and thinking, what are the goals that our recommendations need to achieve? One of them is, we need to make the most of public investment in the street and sidewalk, which again is happening in parallel with this. We need to enhance the appeal and aesthetics of the area, we need to encourage private investment consistent with community desires and market feasibility, and to the extent that we can, promote a stronger connection between tech and the central business district. So we have produced for you four central recommendations and then several other recommendations I'll breeze through here. Our first recommendation is to design and build a walkable street. This is as close as we get to, in this report, to talking about actual street design. And basically, our suggestion to you is, stay engaged with MDT. They have a process that they go through, and we encourage you to stay on top of what that process is, when the deadlines are, what the deliverables need to be, and keep your seat at the table. In doing that, you may communicate to MDT this desire for a more walkable, mixed-use corridor. People would say to us also that, you know, what are some things that we can do to create more of this walkable area, and does it include things like street lamps that are sort of in character with historic surroundings? Are there areas maybe along the corridor where you can create mid-block crossings or bull bouts that shorten the distance people have to walk between one curb and the other? Things like this that you could consider bringing to the table when working with MDT. Our second main recommendation was, create an attractive corridor. Really what we're talking about here is that aesthetic and that beautification of the area. There are some things you can do, and really some things that don't cost a whole heck of a lot of money, to beautify the area. Art, planters, some sort of sculpture types of things, there are ways that you can work with the artist community to create some fun, maybe whimsical, pieces of art, or something that adds a little beauty to the area. Our third, property maintenance. Again, this relates to the fact that people very much enjoy the historical character of the area, but struggle with the fact that some of the properties here are in disrepair. So we actually recommend a three-fold approach to dealing with property maintenance. The first is, target incentives. You know, there are several best practices studies that show that when you are able to cluster incentives in a particular area, it has a far greater impact than having them be dispersed throughout the community. So what if, for a period of a year, or two years, or however long it would be, we wouldn't say too long, but what if for a period of time you were able to work with some of the incentivizing organizations throughout the community and say, you know, for the next year or so, let's really target the incentives in this area to help beautify or clean up or whatever it might be? So that's one approach. Another is assistance. So we recognize that many property owners are maybe unable to take care of their properties in the way that they would want to, or maybe they are absentee landowners. Are there ways to create programs, are there partnerships that city-county could enter into with other organizations, or maybe it's tech, to offer actual assistance to go out and find some properties, work with the owners to create those upgrades? And then finally, this is probably in my sort of personal estimation, the last thing really you want to be doing, but you know, you do have a code enforcement office, and they could be asked to triage some of the properties in the area and come up with a way to sort of prioritize properties to sort of proactively enforce code violations at certain, that meet certain characteristics, and we spell those out for you in the report here. And then finally, our fourth principal recommendation is to invite investment with predictable zoning. We heard time and time again that going through the development process in West Park Street is challenging on a number of different levels. One is that much of the uses that are occurring in this area would be allowed via discretionary review, which is that it's sort of like this black box, the developer comes in and says, can I do this, please? And you say, well, let me think about it. There's no real checklist of, you know, here's what you can do, here's what you cannot do, so let's make it more predictable in that way. Also, several of the uses that are out there probably wouldn't be able to happen unless they were to receive a variance, which is a way of saying, I'm deviating from your code. So what we suggest is that you actually create a zoning improvement policy that basically overlays your existing zoning that says, here are the desired uses that can happen by right, and here are the uses that would happen via conditional use. And so it's just a little more clear about what is sort of encouraged in the area and what is not. And then finally, the last sort of recommendations that we offer here, speaking to some of those other ideas, one would be improved transit between tech and uptown. You know, there is an existing bus that uses the area. One of the focus groups remember with the young professionals, and half of them didn't even know that there was a bus, and they say, I walk Park Street and I see the bus, but I don't know how to access it, I don't know where the information is. That's just a matter of making that stuff more widely available. But people, again, came back to this. But people, again, came back to this idea of a trolley. I'm not sure if it's romantic or if it's actually feasible, but people really seem to enjoy the idea of this trolley circulator that would go between tech and uptown, which reinforces that connection. Education is huge. This is just a matter of taking the policies you have, writing them down, and circulating them amongst the community. Let them know, let people know who need to know that you have processes in place. This is how they work, and here's who you need to talk to, just basic education. Demonstration of ideas. This speaks to the fact that not every project you do on Park Street has to be a multimillion-dollar street reconfiguration. What if you were to work with MDT and other shareholders in the area to, for example, reconfigure the road with some cones for a weekend, and see what happens to travel behavior? Doesn't cost you more than just a couple hours, set the cones up, take them down, see what happens. Maybe it works, maybe it fails. The point is for you to experiment and see what works. That's one way of doing things. There are also ways to add some sort of beautification ideas. The lower picture there is a picture of what's called a parklet. For a couple hours in the afternoon, you set up this mobile seating area, maybe in front of one of the cafes that are out there. It's just a place for people to sit and linger and chat with their friends, and, you know, again, it's cheap and it's quick, and you can sort of see what happens before you're making any sort of bigger-term investments. Number of other ideas spelled out in the report here. Improving the clarity of the historical preservation review process. Really, before I go into this, I acknowledge that since our project here last fall, Mary and the HBO, I understand, have done a number of things, which is great to see. They're working on a set of design guidelines that are a little more clear in terms of how to fit in with the historical character of the area, also making some sort of IFDN charts, some flow charts that would describe how the historical preservation processes work. So I think that's a good step in the right direction. And finally, encouraging rental housing upgrades. This relates really to the former recommendation of figuring out some programs or assistance ideas that you can work with landowners directly, property owners directly, to help make some of the improvements that are contemplated in here. So I think that's it for me. Thank you for listening, and I'd be happy to field any questions.
Do you want to do something? Your update. I did attend several of your events last year and participated in the wonderful food, and you had a great set of maps for people to put down their dreams or thoughts and ideas about what they'd like to see. I do know, you know, and you're, of course, aware of that, too, is the reality of it is, most of that land along the area is privately owned, and county doesn't own any of the land, but doesn't mean we can't think about ways of improving the, I'll call them sidescapes, you know, it's not the street itself, just call it that, sidescapes.
I like them.
You can use that word if you want.
I will.
Yeah, so just, my question is, what would you start with? If you were this county, where would you start? I know there's a lot of things to digest, but just picking your brain here.
You know, that's a question that hasn't been asked at this point. You've got to start somewhere. I'll tell you that doing it all at once would be challenging. So I guess I would start my response by saying, you've got a big community you're working with, and you're under a lot of pressure to improve a lot of different things. And so you've got to be ruthless in how you prioritize projects. So the first question I would ask, and I know I'm here talking about my project, but is this the right project to start with? You know, one of the things we heard was Excelsior needs a lot of work. Maybe that's where you prioritize. So I think that's probably the first step, is for you to figure out, you know, does this really rise to the level that you want? Let's say you do. Then, you know, where would you start in here? I think you can probably actually do a few of these things at the same time. You've got a historical preservation office and officer who are already making some good steps. You've got some very talented people in your community development department who could immediately begin work on revising your zoning and improving that overlay. I think that you've got another group of people who have sort of organically organized. They were the group of people who put together the application for this project. Why not encourage them and work with them to take on some of these demonstration projects? You know, that's something that could happen as well. So I guess, I'm sort of thinking out loud here, but, you know, I wouldn't say that it's one thing that you could do. I could say that there are probably a few things you could do without too much real hassle to start getting at some of this stuff.
Okay.
If that answers your question or not.
Yep. Any questions for John? Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, ma'am chair. John, I just got a quick question for you. In the primary market area, you say there's 9,000 people, and the 639 businesses that employ, you know, approximately, you know, 6,000 people, or 6,000 people and their 639 businesses. Would it be a fair assessment to say that the vast majority of those were on Park Street?
No.
John?
No. No, that's, that wouldn't be fair. I should send you this presentation that's got some of those slides that are unpacked a little more. Think back to that orange sort of blob. Those numbers are pulled from within that area. So Park Street is sort of in the middle. It goes all the way up towards Walkerville, and then down towards the interstate, and then off sort of east and west. So that's the area that those numbers aren't reflecting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for John? Great. Well, thank you very much for the update. I believe it's been all these months since we started this, about six months now, or a little more?
Time flies, you're having fun.
Sure does. Come back to Butte, and we'll take it from there. How's that sound?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So at this point in our meeting, I would call for any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself, Mr. Reviss.
Well, you know, Mark Reviss, 842 West Kalina. I wanted to talk about Section 3, Ordinance 16-2. I handed out stuff last time at Judiciary, and I know I don't have much time to do this, but I'll make it really short. I expanded on some of those items, and then there was one thing that plopped out, which I feel is important to note. On the definition of owner, it's rather large, and I think it could have an impact on banks and lending institutions. The last full encompassing aspect to it is, any person with a shared interest in the property may have a joint and several obligation for compliance with the provisions of this chapter. That's pretty big. That kind of locks in banks and people that would sell properties of, you know, contract for deed, that type of stuff. So I think the point is to narrow it in on the actual owner at the time, and if it does in fact affect people, the provisions for service of notice need to be expanded so that there would be research on who actually has the mortgage and those type of things. So whatever the recommendation is, we'll leave on that. And then even though it was removed from the Butte Silver Bow website, 2.92.010 Community Enrichment Appeals Board, it's still in the municipal code, and I do think that's a good idea to keep that in there, because if it's not going to be a heavy-handed ordinance, it would be a good idea to have an appeals board. And then the other ones are ones I kind of touched on last time. So I think that's the end of my three minutes. So I'll leave it at that. And the vacant building ordinance was a historic preservation ordinance. This does apply to the whole county now, so there are larger ramifications than just for historic properties. So trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comment on any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Move on to Section 3. This is Council Bill Number 16-2, Ordinance Number 16-2. This was referred to this committee, the whole sitting as Judiciary Committee. What happens here is I will call on Chairman Buddy Walker, the chairman of our Judiciary Committee, and he'll come and sit in the big chair here, and he'll conduct this communication just as if it were at the committee level, although in this way, we have a lot more time to talk, and we'll have an opportunity for all council members to have questions and have an opportunity to speak. So Commissioner Walker.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have this.
Give me that. You take these kids everywhere.
Behave yourself. Thank you. As Cindy said, it's the Section 3, Council Bill Number 16-2, was referred to the whole, many of the whole, by the Judiciary Committee. So I'll read the ordinance, and then we'll open this thing up for discussion. It's not the whole ordinance, just the title. An ordinance establishing a new chapter of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSB MC, to be numbered 8.02, and to be entitled vacant buildings, establishing registration procedures, establishing provisions for enforcement, providing for a penalty, and providing for an effective date herein. First off, I'd like to ask County Attorney Shea if she'd like to make a comment on this.
Chairman Walker, council members, I have visited with Ms. Joyce about this, and she did advise me of where you do have some red lines regarding this and some comments, and I guess I would just reserve those for any questions that anybody might have as you're discussing this ordinance. I'm pretty familiar with this particular ordinance, and so I would just reserve any comments at this point until that time.
Thank you. This all started out with Commissioner McDonough. I'd like to have him make a few comments on it, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had moved the communication forward, or had started the communication based on the report from the Community Center for Community Progress, which recommended a property rental registry, which we've seen in numerous presentations before us, having better control or a means to contact buildings or rental properties, of which, of course, failed. The second was this vacant building ordinance to get a handle on vacant buildings and provisions to help us in the community decay effort to not only have an idea of the vacant buildings within Butte Silver Bow, but to have a primary contact person and a way that we could manage or effectively deal with vacant buildings, whether they're historic or nonhistoric. I think it moves us in the right step in adding another tool to the toolbox. I don't see it as just another ordinance. I see it as tightening up some loopholes that we've had before that, and by recommendation from the Senator, or the Center for Community Progress, they've identified those loopholes, and this is a way for us to tighten up our efforts to improve neighborhoods and improve whether commercial corridors or residential neighborhoods. So the discussion currently is, we've had some red lines to the proposed original ordinance, but I think that the ordinance speaks for itself, that Butte Silver Bow is proactively seeking some steps to curb vacant or abandoned properties, many of which are held by absentee landowners.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonough. I'll open it up for questions for the council, and the public may comment on this at any time if they want to come up to one of the podiums and speak. We can do that, too. So commissioners, anyone have a question for, actually, County Attorney Shea? She's got the wherewithal tonight. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I guess to start this out, I think the biggest bone of contention with this ordinance right now is the definition of vacant buildings. It was a red line before, and originally, it was vacant building means an unoccupied building that is unsecured, and it said and/or dangerous structure, and/or posted, and/or city county, has a city-county code violation, and/or is illegally occupied. They struck out the words and 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 just left it or. To me, if we leave it like that, it's going to defeat the purpose of the ordinance, because we'll just use an example, the Exeter Dance Building. It meets these criteria. It's a vacant building. Everyone knows it's vacant. It should be on this register, but it's secure, it's not dangerous, it's not posted, and it's not illegally occupied that we know of. So it wouldn't have to be registered under this ordinance with that definition. I think maybe, just throwing it out here for discussion, but I think maybe a better definition would be a building that has had the water service shut off and/or the gas or electric. That way, it doesn't include a rental from Montana Tech that somebody rents out all year long, except in the summer, it's vacant for the three months, but it, so they would have to register as soon as it becomes vacant, according to this. I think if we moved it to the gas being shut off or the water, then it more defines that, and I don't think people, the landlords probably don't go to that extent to shut off the water and the power and the gas during that summer months when they know it's going to be unoccupied. So that would take them out of the mix, and, but I think it would still, once the water is shut off to a building especially, it's unoccupiable. You cannot live in a building that does not have water, according to our health codes. So I think it would fit this ordinance a lot better, and I'll just throw that out as a discussion item to get that definition taken care of.
Chief Executive Vincent.
Chairman Walker, Commissioner Palmer, I think that sounds like a really wise thing to consider. Another thing to consider in the event that some of these buildings, perhaps the Exeter Dance Building, where a building has not had the water service or gas service turned off, and where it's obviously vacant, would be to place a period of time that the building has been continuously unoccupied for, because that would be another way to really kind of look at this. A variety or the majority of our buildings that we do eventually or currently have issues with, they've been, they've been unoccupied continuously for, you know, six months, a year, or in some cases, many years. So another thing to throw into the mix of discussion and consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you, Chief Executive. There is a provision in here in Section 4, Line 6, on Page 5, and it does state that it would have to be done so after 30 days. The one key issue I have with that is, again, tech students or vacation, or if a house is on the market, I think a longer period of time, say 90 days, on that, on that Section 4, Line 6, there would probably be a lot more accurate and prevent a lot of these issues that we're talking about happening, kind of keeping them at bay.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Just one other concern that was been brought up by numerous citizens is the penalty fee, and they're saying that it's $500 per day. The ordinance does say up to. So if you go to a judge, you know, they might only, they'll work with you, and they might only be $25, but it depends on the case, I would imagine. But it isn't a mandatory $500 per day. It says up to, so that lays it wide open.
Thank you. County Attorney Shea.
Chairman Walker, Commissioner Palmer, council commissioners, I think that your changes that you're recommending, Commissioner Palmer, regarding the water service shut off, the power, et cetera, may help with that particular definition where you want unoccupied and/or all these other places. One of the things that you might consider changing then is, if we do it that way, when you're talking about repair and rehabilitation, you're going to need language in there for people who aren't, whose building isn't necessarily in those disrepair and needing, they only need to register and not have a plan. So you're going to have to tweak that language a little bit in that particular. That's on Section 4, Page 5, where you're looking at, I think, Lines 13 to 21. You would need to change that a little bit if you were going to change the language as requested by Commissioner Palmer. And I think adding an additional timeframe, as suggested by Commissioner Anderson, would help significantly in that you're not then looking at someone who's vacant and doesn't meet any of this other criteria. It's just unoccupied and gives them some time. And I think that the temporary tenants like Montana And I think that the temporary tenants like Montana Tech is a perfect example of that.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to go back to some basics here. The definition of vacant building means an unoccupied building, which would infer that it's a building that could be lived in. And I've had several people ask me about other buildings, storage buildings, warehouses that aren't really designed for occupancy or to actually reside in, and I think there's a little bit of a gray area there as far as, you don't want to leave them out, because obviously that's another layer of buildings that could be potentially in violation. So I don't know, and maybe I'm missing it somewhere here in the ordinance where it refers to those kind of buildings.
Commissioner Sories, then. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm just going to throw something else out there, too, that I was thinking about. On Section 5, first off, I want to say, I think anything we can do, I think this whole idea was just, you know, to battle some of the community decay we have, and to create a database, and to create a list of who owns these vacant buildings, so we can kind of, like Commissioner McDonough was saying, so we have a kind of an idea that we can, you know, talk with them and work with them, whatever, to try to, you know, keep a lot of these buildings from coming back into Butte Silver Bow property or enhance. Anyways, I'm just throwing out a suggestion on Section 5, and it's vacant building fees, and it says, "The owner of the vacant building shall pay an annual fee by January 30 of every year of $25 for the period remaining of a vacant building." You know, I'm just throwing out the idea of maybe as an incentive, from January through February, have it a free registration, you know, to see if you can get, and then January, or from first 30 days of January to be free, and then from February through that following December, it would be, you know, that $25, you know, just a suggestion as an incentive for people to register.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Walker. You know, I see this vacant building ordinance as just a duplication of ordinances, and I see it as a, you know, as an ordinance that, we already have a lot of these things already on the books that we're just not quite getting handled, and our new historic preservation ordinance that we just passed some time ago covers a lot of this stuff. And I see this as a selective type of enforcement, and I also see it as a voluntary $25. I mean, let's face it, the people that are taking care of their buildings, they're going to volunteer the 25. The people that aren't volunteering, they aren't going to come up and tell you, I'm going to pay 25, you know? We've got to go after the people that are actually neglecting these ordinances, not the ones that are trying to abide by them. And what this ordinance does is, it kind of puts the pressure on the people that are trying to make things right, and the ones that we can't get a hold of, you know, these addresses are already in the assessor's office, and there's already a name and an address on every person that pays taxes, or if they don't pay taxes, they come back to the county. I just see this as another layer of government, another ordinance that is unnecessary, and I think that it just creates more problems. And in the long run, we're probably going to find, we're going to have to hire more enforcement officers to enforce these kind of regulations, and I just don't see this as a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question, with the $25 that we're going to be collecting, is that money just going into the general fund, or is it going to be used to maybe help these property owners paint their facade, or, I guess, where's the money going? Is it going just to the general fund? Does anybody know that?
County Attorney Shea?
Chairman Walker, Commissioner Morgan, council commissioners, I don't believe unless the ordinance says specifically that those fees are going to be used to help the owners, that that's where it would go. I would, I don't know this for certain, but I believe that it would go to the fund that is enforcing this, and fees would likely go to, to pay for the enforcement officers or whatever, but it doesn't state specifically in here where those fees are going.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, then. Commissioner Perdue, go on.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Once again, it just shows, you know, we talk about loopholes, you know, and this is going to close loopholes and help us, you know, control these vacant buildings. This is going to create more loopholes, and it's going to create more havoc, you know? We're better off to use a system where we work with people than try to lower the upper hand on them, you know, to make them do things. When you try to force people to do things, they react in a different way. I think the form that we've been using for the last few years has been working good, you know, and we've made headway through the last couple of years that really worked, and I hate to see someone else come up now to start enforcing something that I really don't think is enforceable. Thank you.
Commissioner Perdue, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really think that the Historic Preservation Office has done a great job detailing what they want, especially in Uptown Butte and our huge historic preservation district. The idea that originated with Commissioner McDonough and getting the initial database of this vacant buildings was a tremendous idea, and I think Commissioner McDonough should be applauded for that, and getting that database of what buildings were in need of, just getting that together, that information. But to go further, my concern is private property rights and going beyond and the Fourth Amendment and just inching forward, and I just worry that we are creeping and getting that, overstepping our boundary. I know we have to worry about safety and those issues. I worry about that, and I worry about the $500 a day, and I'm glad that Commissioner Palmer suggested the up to, but I've had folks ask me, do we hold Butte Silver Bow to the same standard when we have, and it was brought up in conversation and discussion here, when Butte Silver Bow has buildings that are in disarray as well? So those are things that we need to think about, too. So I just wanted to mention that when we have these conversations, and so those are things that folks that have come to me to talk about and mention tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I appreciate the kudos for the vacant building registry or the inventory, I was part of a team in this body, I can't take any credit for that singly. In fact, I think it was Commissioner Palmer that probably kept the ball rolling on that, to get the vacant buildings rolling, and this body supported it. I am fully aware of a need. I sat on the, or the Comprehensive Historic Preservation Plan, and I know that we've had concerns with that body, but this in no way trumps that ordinance and that plan that's currently being implemented by our new Historic Preservation Officer. I did read the letter from Mr. Jim Shive in regards to the plan, and I participated on that for the 13 months that we've discussed that as well. At the time that it was not being implemented, we currently didn't have a Historic Preservation Officer with the departure of our last. So I believe that Mary McCormick is currently working on implementing the recommendations. That plan does not supersede, or neither does this proposed ordinance, the Historic Preservation Plan that's currently in front of us. I think it's a good tool. In District 8, there are numerous properties that have been abandoned, and I receive numerous calls on a daily basis, and some calls I've received for the better part of three or four years that I've started my term, that we have crime and other issues, vandalism, that affects the neighborhood. And if you don't think that it affects somebody's personal property rights, try living next to the property that has been vacated or is currently being vandalized by people that don't respect the property. I currently have two homes that were burnt out, they had fire damage, and people are now living in camp trailers. They have no running water, they have no electricity, they have no sanitation facilities, and I take the call and I turn around and I report it to John and Ed and the Community Enrichment and the Health Department, and they respond as fast as possible. But the issues do exist, because we put the run on, we put the run on these problems, but they always come back. A lot of it has to do with this vacant building ordinance. We have no idea, unless you get out within the community, how many homes or structures within neighborhoods are not occupied, and they're not safe. And by not safe, I don't mean that they're in danger of falling over. They're in danger of being occupied by people that do not have the right to be there. It affects the personal property rights of the neighbors. If people don't think that it doesn't affect their property, they're not living next to these vacant structures. It affects their resale value, it affects their safety for their family, and I think that we need a better handle on it. Part of the problem that we have, and I've seen in my district, if somebody from out of town or out of state owns it, they don't respond. They don't pick up the phone call. I have one house on Iowa Street that's owned by a gentleman that currently supposedly lives in Mexico. We've sent numerous certified letters, and we've had numerous problems with the property. We do not have a handle on it currently. I don't think it's from lack of enforcement. I think that we need to tighten it up, but I think that this aids the effort, and I'm fully in support of it. And I think that with the recommended changes in language, we're going to get to a better resolution, and I wouldn't recommend that we take action tonight, but I think this is in a step in the right direction. My last comment is just with the literature handed to us tonight by Mr. Revis, I would like to clarify that we did repeal this appeals board. We, this body, repealed the appeals board approximately two years ago. We, the Council of Commissioners, are now the appeals board, and this language no longer exists in the municipal code, just for clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, for one, support the Community Enrichment Department wholeheartedly. I think there's a lot of work out there that we have to work on. And to be honest, I like this council bill or this ordinance that we're looking at, but here's a question for you. So we're asking people to pay $25 to register their property so that we know how to contact them. If they don't pay their $25 and they don't register, we're going to have to find somebody to fine, according to the ordinance. How do we do that? We'd have to go back, Mr. Randall, his department has to, or has had to do it for me before, is you go back to the tax things, and they had to do some detective work one time for me, that they had to find somebody's email from a friend and that, and it ended up working out, but I guess my biggest question is, is by having them not register, how are we going to find them if we supposedly don't have their contact information?
Good question. Commissioner Anderson?
Mr. Chairman Walker, I thought that the assessor would have all the information on every building. That's my two cents.
Commissioner McDonough, then. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I, I fully understand Commissioner Morgan's line of questioning, however, people that are absentee landowners oftentimes supposedly think that they have a property management company, or that they've appointed somebody locally or hired somebody locally to handle their affairs on the building, if they're that responsible. And oftentimes, those people aren't aware, they just rat off their responsibility, and if their supposedly local contact doesn't deal with it, we have no recourse. So in the ordinance, it was proposed that we would have a contact, and if a person is an absentee landowner, they can assign their property management company or somebody that oversees their local affairs as the contact person for us to address issues on the street. It is a known fact that the treasurer's office and the assessor's office has contact information, but that doesn't mean that those people are cooperating. So we're, again, moving forward with the proposed solution to help with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Once again, these are enforcement issues, and, you know, our Community Enrichment Department has done a good job lately, and one of them working in there, we hired as a part-time employee, took an inventory, took him six months to eight months to inventory some of these buildings, if you remember back a year or so ago. He inventoried these buildings. He knows which ones, what condition they're in. I think we had a rating from 1 to 5 or 1 to 10, how bad they were. I'm sure that's all still there. These things we're talking about are enforcement issues, and if they have a property management company running their facility, that's their business. That's not government's business. Our business is to do the government's work and enforce the laws that are on the books, you know, and that's what Mr. Randall does, and he does a good job of it. This doesn't give him no more tools, doesn't give anyone no more tools to do anything. The laws are there, the ordinances are there, they're enforcing them, they're doing their best they can. When they pay their taxes and they're not in arrears, we can only do so much. And if you think that by passing this ordinance, you're going to throw another strong arm into somebody that don't want to comply with you, you're going to find out that that doesn't work that way. The more you push, the more they push back. The people that want to comply, they comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randall, would you like to comment on that? Do you have anything to say?
I have a lot to say. Help us out here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, members of council. First of all, I believe in this, in this new ordinance. I've been coming up to this body for 20 years, and it's community enrichment, community enrichment, what are we going to do? We're doing it. You know, we now have a full staff, we're able to do a job that, to be honest with you, we couldn't do four or five years ago because we had one person doing it for the whole county. Now, you know, that might be on me, or that might be on you folks. I think it's, you know, I think it's maybe a little of both. We are fully staffed, we came up with a very creative way to staff this department. We're rewriting our community enrichment and community decay ordinances, which we'll lay out to you folks here, here in the next month or so, which is really going to support what we're trying to do. This vacant building ordinance, it does have teeth. It does allow us to do things that we can't do or that is more difficult. Commissioner Fisher states that, you know, if these people have management companies or companies that watch these properties, that's their business, and I agree. Everyone has the right to do what they want with their properties, as long as they're within the ordinance. If you remember right, we had, about a year ago, we had a cat house issue that one of our community enrichment folks happened to find, because they went to a property and smelled it. We called this owner who lived out of state, and he was appalled. He had a rental company and was getting his rent every month, and they were supposed to check it and do their inventory or do their investigation, and they hadn't. That building had to be torn down. Now, it doesn't affect me one way or the other if the building had to be torn down. Those kinds of things don't affect me. What affected me is that it took us three or four days to find this gentleman, for him to call us back and say, oh, call my, call my property management company. All we're asking to do, first of all, we're not, you know, we're not trying to enforce our will on anyone, we're trying to follow some ordinances. This community enrichment thing has really evolved. We work so closely with fire services, police, and the planning and zoning and community development and parking, and the Health Department, that, you know, we're the eyes out there. This gives us a tool, which is what you folks have been asking for forever, to improve Butte esthetically, which we're doing every day. We're seeing 40, 50, 60 properties a day now, every day. What we're asking is that when we see an issue, or that we're having these folks pay $25, we've committed that we're going to take the time, if they want to walk through their building and say, geez, Mr. Randall, or Ed, or whatever they want to call me... want to call me. What are the ordinances? Because most people don't know. Half the people that own properties live out of state or out of the city. If they want to come in, or the folks that, that want to be here, we'll show them what we're talking about, we'll walk them through it. You know, we're going to have a, a, a phone number and an address of any, any information that we need that's pertinent to, if we see a window broken out, we see a pigeon flying through it, we see, uh, broken walls, we see something that's happened, we can be proactive and call them and work with them. This is, we're not heavy-handed, we're not out to get anyone. If you have problems with your buildings, you probably know it already, and we've tried to deal with you, and we're going to continue to. That's on them. This gives us a tool to do what you've asked us to do, what the chief executive has asked us to do. You know, we're very proactive, we're going to have a cleanup day with Mr. Sorich's group. I know that Mr. Palmer has asked, I'm going to do a presentation tomorrow night up in Centerville, we're going to, we're going to support their cleanup efforts. So, you know, what do you guys want? You tell me. You know, i- if, if you don't like this idea, then we'll try something else. I think this idea is going to work. I think it's going to help us with our new ordinances and everything, the group that we're working with. I think this is the direction to go in. We've been successful. We hear a lot that, you know, Buttes this, and, you know, this gentleman that just come, came up and talked, talked about West Park Street. We're on West Park Street, we have plans to improve aesthetically the buildings there. We have $5,000 that we're going to use in Central Butte this summer to help those folks paint their homes. That goes a long way if we're asking for sweat equity and we're not, you know, they're not hiring someone to paint their homes. We're going to change Central Butte this summer. That's a huge step for our local government and what we're trying to do to our community. That's helping those that need help the most. So, you know, I, 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 I thank everyone and appreciate all the, all the good advice and the good ideas, let's keep, continue to work, that's fine. But don't think that we're trying to pick on anyone, don't think that we're being heavy-handed. You know, we're trying to make this town better, and we're the ones who are doing it as lo- with you folks 10 hours a day. You know, we talked, uh, we, we painted one house up on Alabama this year, a group of us. Hopefully, we can get some money, and I think we can, for that West Park corridor, to help those folks that, that can't afford it, paint their homes with sweat equity. You know, we can change that corridor, and it needs changed. Central Butte needs changed. The whole town needs an ordinance that we can look at and say, hey, you know what, that building has been vacant for 10 years, or five years, or six months. Let's find out what's going on. And if not, if it's in great shape, and those folks want to come and give us their $25, that's great, because that's the ordinance. We're their eyes and ears out there. If we see something, we're going to do what we, first of all, we're going to be, you know, doing our jobs, and secondly, we're going to be a good neighbor and call up and say, hey, Ms. Shaw, we saw your, you know, we saw your, your house, you know, someone had broke the back door open. The last thing I want to tell you is, this is going to allow us to call people before we go in. I think one of the commissioners, and I can't remember which one stated, we're not so concerned about the buildings falling down. It's always, hey, I stay at nights worrying about it, but my staff doesn't. What I'm concerned about is my staff's safety. We have a very dangerous job. These folks are going and knocking on doors, they're going in alleys, they're snapping pictures, they're doing all this work when, you know, it's dangerous. And I don't know that you guys appreciate how dangerous it is. They just executed a gentleman in Texas for shooting a code enforcement officer several years ago. You know, so we've invested in our ordinances, we've trained our folks, they're incredibly cross-trained in everything we do. We're asking for your support. Thank you for all that great information, but, you know, we're ready to move forward. If there has to be some more add-ons or subtractions, then we're all there. So, uh, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Mr. Palmer, then Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it really bothers me when we have to sit here as a council and make a decision whether or not to tear down a building because it's been neglected for so long. You look back at the Greek Cafe, you look down at the Brink's Building, those were tough decisions. But at that time, we started looking at ways to stop that from happening. And I think this is one of the outcomes of that research. I think it's a good idea, and if we can stop some buildings to getting, becoming so far gone that they have to be torn down when they come back to the city's ownership, then it's worth it. And if we have to make some changes to this ordinance, let's do it, but let's get it right, and let's do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson? Oh. Mr. Randall?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Madam Chair, council members, you know, we, again, we talk on this body that we have these studies and we don't use them. We took every bit of information from the study that Commissioner McDonough talked about. We met with the chief executive, he said, put them in place, and that, we've been doing it for a couple of years now. We're trying different things, you know, these are best practices, these are what works in other communities. They're proven. Don't we deserve as good as other communities are getting? I mean, don't we deserve that, finally, that, you know, that we can move forward and, and be a little proactive, and, and if we have to not be heavy-handed, but make people follow the rules? As a community, are we there yet in Butte? Because I think we deserve it. I, I think that Butte deserves it. We're doing what you've asked. We have these studies, we pay a couple bucks for them, and this one in particular, it was a grant, but we're using the information, it, it's not on a shelf. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chairman Walker. There's a few things here, is this ordinance perfect? No. Is there a lot of things that we could change, and we probably will change in the next couple of weeks? Yes. That being said, we need to, to be a lot more proactive. And as far as heavy-handedness, you know, maybe we should be a little bit more heavy-handed with a lot of these people. I've been walking up and down the neighborhood, I went and met with the group of people last week, and they had an awful lot of legitimate complaints. They've been finding hypodermic needles in parking lots next to the high schools, Butte High and Central. They've found numerous broken trees, broken out windows, houses that have been broken into, and other residences that have been broken into. Cars, uh, just abandoned on the side of the road, a couple of them, obviously in a wreck, flat tires, half of the grill was missing, and the whole front end of the car was smashed and parked on the side of the street. It takes time. There's a lot of ordinances, there's a lot of laws, county, state, that we have to follow. We can't just go and do everything at a snap of a finger. But it, our community, we need to have a lot more pride in our community. And one of the ways we can have that pride in our community is by making a difference here. We can enforce that and kind of show that pride in our community by how we take care of it. And the biggest stewards of our community is this body, so to speak. We have the power and authority to give power to Mr. Randall's department and make his life easier and his enforcement officers easier through things. We have the comprehensive, uh, historic preservation plan a few years ago that a few people mentioned. There's an awful lot of good things with that, you know, and Mr. Shive's letter that was brought up, maybe it would be a good idea to cross-reference some of these things. You know, there's a section in there about mothballing a property. Maybe a good use of some of this money that we're collecting from this ordinance would be to go towards mothballing these properties. We said that a lot of the buildings that are in bad and horrible shape are owned by the county. The county has an awful lot of buildings in deplorable shape, but many of those are ones that we've received through tax. You know, they don't pay their taxes for four or five years. Yes, they become ours, and they become our prob- problem. And then we're on the hook for $90,000, $150,000 to have the buildings removed, torn down, it goes to the landfill. It's an awful lot of work on all of the departments, and it's a headache, not only for the community, but definitely for this body, for those of you who remember the Greek and the Brink's Deluxe debates. So we need to have a very proactive approach. And for far too long, one of the biggest complaints I've been getting, and one of my biggest complaints, is that more often than not, as a governmental body in this county, we are reacting to problems. We wait for a problem to come, and then we try to find a solution to it. But this is one of those times, one of those few times in the last six years I've been here, where we were taking a step towards being proactive, to try to fix a problem before it becomes a bigger problem. And I think that's one of the things that we need to do. We need to take an approach to fix these problems and find solutions to problem areas before they become a bigger problem. If we can help somebody, that's great. But one of the biggest problems that we have is twice in the last year, I've called on Mr. Randall and his department to get ahold of people, and we had no clue who, where they were or anything, because the registry was wrong, the tax things were wrong, somehow it's getting done through something. But when we have like the cat house, where an owner is depending on somebody over here, we need to make sure that all these areas of communication are working, and there's been a breakdown somewhere. And if this goes aways to solve it, that's great. I would almost like to see it taken a step further. Instead of having just vacant properties registered, I'd like to see all property registered with legitimate address of the owner, in case something does happen to it. It does make it a lot easier for all of us. But that'd be my two cents.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw? Cindy, either one. Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just had a quick question for you, and thank you for, um, being on the radio today, just quick mention of that and the alley rally, so just in aside. Quick question, you mentioned in your, in your comments, you said, "Half of the people who own properties live out of the city or out of the state." Is that correct? I, I was kind of taken aback by that.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, members of council, when we did the inventory, I think it was 40-some percent of the people, Brendan, am I correct, that lived out of the city or out of the state. And that was concentrated more on the hill where we did the inventory.
So, I, I'm, I'm just amazed that that is, that is really, really a, a huge amount of people and a, a huge amount of folks. That, that doesn't change my view, however, uh, but that's a, a huge amount. I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Mr. Shaw, did you want to comment? Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My final thought on this tonight, because we're obviously going to have further discussion, is I would like to remind everybody of the vacant building at 750 South Wyoming Street that we spent nine months, uh, the county attorney's office was fully invested, this body was fully invested, the Community Enrichment, it, it laid in the street, in the street for nine months, and the taxpayers of Butte Silver Bow are still on the hook for roughly $300,000 for a property owner that had a vacant building that laid in the street, and we spent months and hundreds of thousands of dollars. The sheriff's office was involved, the fire department was involved, we were fully invested with county resources. We have vacant buildings out there that need to be proactively corrected before we end up with more situations where they're in somebody else's district in the street, or we have another safety violation or code violation. I just think that it's coming back to us on a more frequent basis, we've had several already, that was the most recent, but I think this is a proactive step, and that's my final thought tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I was going to give Bill Anderson the opportunity. Well, at this time, I would move that we, uh, send this back to the county attorney's office if Deputy County Attorney Shay would do that for us, and she has taken some copious notes, I've noticed, on things we've talked about. I don't think that we're ready yet, I think there's a little tweaking to be done, and I believe that we had some great ideas and comments, so, uh, and then I believe that we'd send it back to the Judiciary Committee and awaiting the county attorney's revisions. That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, you've all heard the motion on the floor in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Walker. In response to Mr. McDonough's comment, what would this vacant building ordinance do to alleviate the building sitting at 750 West Wyoming, or on Wyoming, North Wyoming? Nothing. Do nothing. You know, the building that we're talking about, that the county got stuck cleaning up and everything, this vacant building ordinance would have done nothing and had nothing to do with that. That building still would have been vacant, it still would have caved in. Thank you.
Oh, Dennis, you want to? Did you want to comment? Oh, no, sir. Oh, thank you. All right, you've heard the motion, the second. All in favor of referring this back to Judiciary Committee, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries, it will go back to the Judiciary Committee for needed changes.
Chairman Walker?
Thank you.
Little useful chairs here, that's okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, for that bit of discussion, and thank you, Ann, for taking care of that for us, too, thanks. So, moving on. Section four, Communication number 16-27, Craig T. Williams, 803 North Main, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent land owner policy. The Williams have actually wanted to withdraw their request, they're selling their home, but Lori Casey is going to actually send us a letter of recommendation to this body, we'll just continue holding this communication advanced until that letter comes through. Section five, Communication 16-52, Wei Wen Tan and Wei Yang Tan, 1627 Shore Drive, San Jose, California, requesting council commissioners approve purchase of property at 417 North Main Street, Butte, Montana. I, I heard today from Dory Skruker that we did get a response from the Tans, and they would like to donate the land. Again, we will hold this in advance as a placeholder until we get the recommendation from the Land Office to that effect, so that we can cross-reference at that time.
The Tans?
Uh, the Tans. The Tans are going to donate the land to the county, and we will be getting a letter of that, to that effect, from the Land Office. Section six, Communication 16-70, Patsy Coats, property specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Wreckers Office, requesting council commissioners to concur with the request of the county attorney's office to issue a resolution for mailing, quote, "A notice that a tax deed may be issued to the county," end quote, "to all property owners and interested parties on the delinquent real property taxes for year 2012." That is in the county attorney's office to be drafted. So we'll hold that in advance. Section seven, Communication number 16-111, Donita Rameen, Western Montana Mental Health Center, requesting council commissioners authorize street closures for stomping out the stigma walk on May 27th, 2016. The folks that were organizing this parade have decided now not to have a parade that would require street closures, they're just going to do something else similar to what they did last year, I guess it was more on the side, in a, in a parking lot. So, uh, at this time, I would just recommend we note, place it on file. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make that motion that we note Communication number 16-111 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to plate, to note Communication 16-111 and place it on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, Communication number 16-126, Dan Rogencamp, 630 South Washington Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council commissioners authorize purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. Property of interest lies east of 630 South Washington Street, and includes three lots above Storm Detention Track and one lot below. We had this discussion the last time we met, and, uh, it was, uh, recommended that we do not, uh, that we deny this, and there was a letter of, um, recommendation to that effect, so I'll ask Commissioner Morgan to cross-reference this with that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we cross-reference Communication 16-126 with Communication number 16-173 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to cross-reference communication sixteen dash one-two-six with communication sixteen dash one-seven-three and place this on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section nine, communication number sixteen dash one-two-nine. Karen Burns, Director of Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council commissioners authorize a presentation on the Butte Economic Gardening Project at the April thirteenth meeting that did occur this evening. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place communication number sixteen dash one-two-nine on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication sixteen dash one-two-nine on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section ten, communication number sixteen dash one-fourty-one. Captain Doug Conway, Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize online submission for the Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG program, and schedule a public hearing for May fourth, 2016. We will hold that in advance until that date. Section eleven, communication number sixteen dash one-fourty-four. Nick Sanford, Road Operations Manager, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize time on April twentieth, 2016, agenda, to conduct a bid opening regarding the Butte Silver Bow Invitation for Bid for Asphalt. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place communication sixteen dash one-four-four on file, or on file. On fire.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, I won't repeat that one, uh, to place communication sixteen dash one-fourty-four on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section twelve, communication number sixteen dash one-four-five. J.P. Gallagher, Director of Butte Silver Bow Parks and Recs Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize a public hearing on April twentieth, 2016, to amend FY 2016 budget and Parks and Recreation Golf Course Fund. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place communication number sixteen dash one-four-five on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication sixteen dash one-four-five on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section thirteen, communication number sixteen dash one-four-six. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners approve zoning application number one-seventy-four, and request the county attorney to prepare an ordinance adopting the proposed change to the Butte Silver Bow zoning district map. That resolution is now sitting in judiciary. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we cross-reference communication number sixteen dash one-four-six with ordinance number sixteen dash four and place, uh, this on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference communication sixteen dash one-four-six with ordinance sixteen dash four and place this on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section fourteen, communication number sixteen dash one-four-eight. Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize a public hearing on April twentieth, 2016, to receive public comment regarding a sanitary sewer, TSEP, environmental review, and preliminary engineering report. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will make a motion that we place communication sixteen dash one-four-eight on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication one-six dash one-four-eight on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section fifteen, communication number sixteen dash one-four-nine. Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council of commissioners approve request for county attorney to prepare a resolution regarding the TSEP sanitary sewer application. That resolution was passed, uh, we suspended the rules last Wednesday. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we cross-reference communication sixteen dash one-four-nine with resolution sixteen dash one-nine and place this communication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference communication sixteen dash one-four-nine with resolution sixteen dash nineteen and place this on file. Is there anything on the question? Favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section sixteen, communication number one-six dash one-five-one. Sheriff Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize chief executive to sign a contract with the Community Counseling and Correctional Services, CCCS, to transport youth to detention center. Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. Um, a meeting was held, and some minor suggested changes were forwarded to CCCS, and we're waiting back to hear from them, so we'll continue hold.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We'll hold that in advance. Section seventeen, communication one-six dash one-six-two. Mark R. O'Neil, twenty-six eleventh Avenue, Helena, Montana, requesting council commissioners authorize purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. Property of interest is the back end of the lot at six twenty-one West Court Street, bordering on the north side and joining it to the alley. That is a recent, uh, communication that has been sent to the land sales department. We will hold that in advance. Section eighteen, communication number sixteen dash one-six-three. Ron Crowley, nine oh five thirteenth Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council commissioners authorize purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. Property of interest borders west of nine oh five thirteenth street over to where the slope goes down to the reservoir. And again, this is a newer communication that has just recently been sent to the land sales committee to come back with their recommendation. We'll hold that in advance. Section nineteen, communication number sixteen dash one-six-nine. Pamela Haxby-Cody, Executive Director, Butte Local Development Corporation, requesting council commissioners authorize a presentation on the West Park Street Corridor Plan, uh, this evening. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place communication sixteen dash one-six-nine on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication sixteen dash one-six-nine on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section twenty, communication number one-six dash one-seven-two. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize a public hearing on May eleventh, 2016, to hear public comment on the proposed amendment to the official Butte Silver Bow zoning map. We will hold that in advance until that public hearing on May eleventh. At this point in our meeting, uh, I would ask for any public comment and any public matter that was not in tonight's agenda. I don't think I see anyone out there willing to talk.